Let's call this meeting to order. Daniel, make a note of attendance, please?
Yep, will do.
And then you want to just...
Yep. Mayor, as the council, tonight we have the first kind of discussion workshop on the 2019 proposed budget. We have Hannah Lynch, who's the Finance Director from AEM, who's here, who'll walk through kind of the summary of the major changes in the 2019 budget. And then we'll be able to answer any questions you have asked. You know, if we're missing something in the budget, we can kind of go through the level of detail that you're comfortable with just to make sure that, you know, the budget that gets presented, you know, at the September meeting is reflective of your guys' desires to for funding strategies for 19. With that, Hannah, you want to start?
Alrighty. So tonight, we'll just go through about the first 24 pages of your packet. There is some more detail included in the back, but we're going to take more of a high-level view than a count-by-count today. So just to start off, this is our first budget workshop for the 2019 budget. There's also an opportunity next week to have another workshop if there's anything additional that we want to bring forward or discuss. Then after that, the preliminary general fund budget, as well as the preliminary tax levy, will be approved on the September 10th meeting. That has to be into the county by September 30th with those preliminary numbers. A little bit farther past these dates, the Truth in Taxation meeting will then be probably about the first meeting in December where that final general fund. The rest of the funds, as well as the tax levy, will be approved. We're doing it a little bit differently this year, so we are just focusing on the general fund as well as the tax levy today. I know in the past that Forest Lake has also looked at, you know, water and sewer and some other funds at this time, but we're just focusing on general fund really to help for that rate study to get done for water. We'll take a look at water and sewer in a couple of months before we have to approve that final in December. So just as an overview for the general fund, the tax levy that is required in that fund for general operations this year is about 7.5 million, which is about a 3% increase from 2018. Those expenditures then have increased about $50,000 or a .5% increase. And overall, the whole levy, other levies are included, you know, capital, as well as some debt service along with that general levy, has increased to about 10.2 this year, a 2% increase. So we'll get into the details of that, but that's just a quick overview of really what we'll be digging into today. For general fund revenues, we break them up into about seven broad categories just to take a look at them so we can see what actually came in for the full year in 2017, how we're looking so far in 18, as well as how the budget is comparing to 2018. So some of the major changes that are coming with this. So a big one that stands out right away is that intergovernmental revenue. So we're actually seeing a decrease in that proposed budget for 2019. The reason being is just an accounting change in where we're going to account for some state aid that's used for street maintenance. Just to demonstrate that, this here shows a different fund. So other than the general fund, this Capital Improvement Fund, we're actually going to start accounting for that state aid in 2019 in the Capital Improvement Fund instead of the general fund, just to help the track, help tracking of those dollars when they're used for seal coating, street maintenance, mill and overlay. We'll get a little bit more into that when we look at expenditures. But that's the biggest reason why that one's decreasing. We're just going to account for it in a different fund, but we'll still be receiving that state aid. Some other ones, taxes, that first line, that increased about 3%. The taxes are always dependent on what expenditures we're expecting to have. So that increase is really the key factors in that is why our expenditures are increasing in the next couple of pages. The other ones, licenses and permits, it went up slightly, about $30,000. That one is due to building permit revenue. That's just been coming in a little bit higher than we've been budgeting for. So we increased that budget just slightly to help account for how much we think we'll actually receive in those building permits. Charges for services, there's a few increases there. One is due to the SRO agreement, School Resource Officer, that was approved just a couple of months ago. We made sure we budgeted how much that agreement says we will receive from the school district in 2019, as well as some increased plan check fees, which we, same with building permits, have been receiving a little bit more plan check fees than we've been budgeting for. So just increase a little bit to help align with what we actually think we'll receive. Other than that, the fines and miscellaneous are another one that have slight decreases in those. Fines and forfeitures, that decrease comes from court fines. Court fines, another story. We get that money, we haven't been receiving quite as much as we have been budgeting for, so we decreased it just to help with what we think we'll actually receive, as well as miscellaneous. There was some refunds and reimbursements budgeted in 2018 where we didn't have any money going to that line item. Any broad questions on revenue at this point?
What was the big changes in charges for services?
Charges for services, the big changes there was due to that School Resource Officer, just because it'll be a little bit more with that new agreement, as well as the plan check fees.
I'm just curious, the drop from 2017 to this year?
So the 804 to the 365?
Yeah, I mean, if you average it out, you know, to the, what we budgeted is 651.
Yep.
So, I mean, it was consistent for 18 and 19, I was curious why the drop from 17? Is there anything significant in there, or is this kind of how it fell?
So for charges for services, there are a lot of different accounts that make up that. The biggest ones are with that, the increase that we were looking at is in those building permit fees. A big reason too is we like to be conservative. That's kind of how City of Forest Lake has been looking at their revenues. So we don't want to budget, say, a million dollars in charges for services and then come up short and not have enough funds just to run our general operations.
I'm sorry, it was actual, not budgeted.
Sorry, no.
I missed that point.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright. This one, we already did go over, so we'll just switch there. We have a couple of graphics on page six here of the packet. Just a good representation in a pie chart form. General fund is mostly supported with taxes. So other things, that intergovernmental, miscellaneous, other financing sources, those other revenues, if we don't have enough of those to cover all of our expenditures within the general fund, the tax levy then supports to help all of our general operations. You can see here too, we've been pretty consistent year to year. The blue is actual, I know that can be confusing. The other ones are comparing budget. So with taxes, you can just see we have a slight increase for 2019 compared to 17 and 18 there. Another, everything else seems pretty consistent throughout the board. Before we start digging into some of the key changes in expenditures from the 2018 budget into 2019, there's some proposed staffing additions that will affect a couple of departments. So the first one that we have is a Community Service Officer. So this position would be a new full-time position within the Police Department. They would help with code enforcement, animal control, as well as some administrative tasks. And this one, it has an effect on a couple of different departments. So currently, there's some code enforcement being done within the Community Development Department. There's some part-time seasonal work being done there. So that would be eliminated and the Community Service Officer would then take over some of that code enforcement responsibility. So you'll see actually a savings in the Community Service Department, as well as, you know, a little bit more in wages and benefits going to Police Department with this new addition.
Any idea what the savings are in the Administration Department for that position?
Off the top of my head, I believe they're around $15,000. The second proposed staffing addition that we have is a Maintenance Worker. This would also be another new full-time position. This one would be in the Park Maintenance Department. So with that, one of the big reasons we're thinking of this proposed staff member is we could bring mowing back in-house. So in the Park Maintenance Department, in the 2018 budget, that in, oh, the, excuse me, the contracted mowing was about $59,000 in 2018. So if we were to bring this person back on in the Park Maintenance Department, they could then take over that mowing, bring it back in-house, as well as during other times of the year, help with other public works, as well as park maintenance duties. With the general fund expenditures, we'll have the same kind of graph here. So we'll have actual 2017, how we're doing so far actually in 2018, as well as how the 18 budget compares to 19. These are all the major departments of the city. The key changes here are highlighted in blue, so we'll just go through those, make sure, if you have any questions. The first one, administration. That one, that increase is mostly just due to wages and benefits. Step increases, just personnel within that department. The finance, that $15,000, that's all due to professional services. So there's two contracts that they have within finance. So one with AEM Financial Solutions for Financial Management, as well as Gallagher Consulting contracts. I believe that Gallagher Consulting was not budgeted in 2018. So we are just, there's a slight increase in that AEM fee, as well as Gallagher is being budgeted in 19. It was being paid for in 18, just wasn't budgeted correctly. With elections, that's a swing that we'll see in every city. So, you know, in 2019, we're not going to have any elections, so we just won't have that expense. For information technology, that's mostly all due to computer support. So there's a few different factors in there. One is that there's some new network switches that have to be purchased, as well as a new building permit software that the city's looking into. Community development, in there, I think that is all, yep, that's all due to that code enforcement moving to the Police Department. So I'm, oh, it's two parts, sorry. So I think that that wages and benefits was about $15,000. The other part of that $25,000 decrease in community development is due to the comp plan. It's nearing completion, so there just won't be as many professional services needed to help with that project. General government buildings, that's another one, similar to administration. It just has to do with wages and benefits, some hours that employees are working in that department. Police, that's one of our big changes. There's multiple factors that go into that, about $200,000 increase there. So the first one is the addition of the CSO. So with the addition of the CSO, wages and benefits are going to increase slightly. With that, there's also some union contract COLA increases for police officers. There is some offsetting decreases. One is that last year in 2018, we removed capital from the general fund and we're now accounting for it in a capital replacement fund. But in 18, we moved buying the squad to the capital replacement fund. But to build out that squad and get it ready, that was still being paid for out of the general fund. So we're actually going to use, take that squad build expense and put it into the capital equipment fund. As well as the savings in some motor fuel, we just haven't been realizing as many expenditures for motor fuel in the Police Department, so we thought we could decrease it slightly.
What are we budgeting as far as the CSO in next year's budget?
I don't have the total compensation off the top of my head, but I can definitely provide it. Yep. Then finally, there's also another slight increase in the Police Department due to computer support. So with their new records management system, just comes an increased fee every year for keeping that system running.
That's the county program that rolled out?
Yeah.
Next department, we have Fire. So we see about a $10,000 decrease in Fire and there's another offsetting two key changes in the Fire Department. So the first being, there's some increases in wages and benefits. But then there's also corresponding decrease in that department due to, there was some contract services that were budgeted in 2018 for pre-fire planning. And so that is not going to be a project here in 19, so we just won't need those funds.
Is that, oh, go ahead. Is that just about completed? Where are we at with that?
Today was her last day.
Okay.
And what our goal was 396. And I've got to go through what she did in the last couple of days, but we're going to end up with about 450. So she had about 55 more inspections than I thought.
Percentage-wise, where we sitting on that?
I'd say we're probably 80% complete.
Do we want to, is she available to do more?
Well, she hit that 67 days. And so as a temp employee, if we go above that, that kicks in a bunch of other stuff that has to occur.
Your wages, your benefits.
Do we want to look at getting another person in to do that, or?
Or even approve you guys, because I think some of you are doing them, correct?
Oh, I had a person that did it, he got deployed, and he just got back less than a month ago. And he's like, I'm not going to do anything, I need this time to do other things until, he starts full-time employment. So basically, what I've got left is schools, churches, and some out in Columbus. And I was going to hit the schools closer to the time that school began to let them finish the construction project, so it'd be more of an accurate inspection, so.
What are you thinking it's going to take to get that last 20%?
Well, hopefully...
Are you going to be doing them, or?
I'll be doing the schools.
Okay.
And the other part of it is just identifying the buildings that are just not known. You know, unfortunately, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but Forest Lake doesn't license its businesses. And so to get an accurate number of how many businesses there actually are, I'm basically going to have to go through the pre-plan map and look for buildings that weren't pre-planned and then figure out what businesses they are. Columbus is a little bit easier, they've got an accurate list, so I know exactly the number there. So at our next business meeting, I'm going to bring that up to see if anybody wants to come in and complete the project. So I can hire a paid-on-call firefighter under the 67-day rule and not impact anything.
And you have money left to do that?
Yeah, that whole program was about $11,000 to do for the 67 days. So it was, it came in a lot less than I thought it was going to.
What was budgeted for that?
That was budgeted for $30,000. You know, so by the time we complete the other ones that aren't done, you're probably going to be 15, maybe 17. So well underneath what we budgeted for.
And that'll hopefully be done this year?
That's what the goal is, to complete it.
Cool, you guys made good progress, be nice to see it done, not lingered.
Yeah, it would be.
Thank you.
Can we back up one line? It's not a big deal, but I don't understand the safety camp. Last year's numbers were higher than this year's, but yet it says there's a 140% increase.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so last year, it looks like there wasn't, we just, I should back up for a minute. So just seeing what we spent in 17, as well as 18, so it decreased just a little bit, safety camp's over, so that year-to-date 18 amount is what was expended for safety camp this year. The budget just seemed to be very low in 2018. So one thing that we did is the $6,000 2019 expenditures for safety camp actually matches the amount of donations that are being budgeted on the revenue side for safety camp. So it's something that is, in a budget standpoint, fully funded by donations. And they also have, I believe, off the top of my head, about $8,000 from previous years that can be used to supplement for those expenditures.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
The next one, building inspection. That one is just due to, there was additional fire tech that was hired this year in 2018, so he was not included in the wages and benefits budget within 2018. So just because we have that new staff, he'll have to be budgeted for the whole year in 19 in that department. With streets, you'll see another about the same, you know, decrease, $370,000 there, as we saw in that intergovernmental line in revenue. So again, it's the same story, I'll just flip quick. I should have, I meant to move this red highlight down to the expenditure section, but you can see that that street maintenance expenditures, so they were usually being expended out of the general fund in 2018, we're actually moving them with the revenue to the capital improvement fund just to better track how Public Works is spending those street maintenance dollars. Park maintenance, that $43,000 increase from 18, that is mostly due to that addition of a new staff member. Again, that's an offsetting, you know, increase in wages and benefits to bring that staff member on, as well as a decrease in the contract services that we then have for mowing.
What line item is that, does the mowing come out of? I would have expected the same item.
Park maintenance. Sorry.
Because we're adding an employee, a lesser expensive employee to supplement a more expensive comp, or to replace a more expensive contractor, I would have expected the overall to be a decrease?
So it actually is an increase. So total compensation is actually more than, you know, bringing that $59,000, that's the outsourced mowing. But the idea is then, you know, mowing's only a few months out of the year. That park maintenance employee can then help more in the park maintenance department, as well as other streets and public works departments.
Question for Dave, is one guy going to be able to keep up with that demand, or do you have seasonals that are going to be?
With seasonals to assist, yeah.
And that new mower we got's going to be the main use?
Yeah.
You know, is that getting trailer then, or driven around, or?
Yep, there's a trailer on the CIP. That's a sofa that will haul a zero-turn in, they're all master, on the same trailer with the tilt top. So you pull with the truck and it'll be a six-pack or a four-door truck that will pull, go out and just hit everything, so.
How many hours do you have on a machine already, Dave? Do you remember? Because it seems like it's really out there a lot, so.
I don't know, I can get that frame, but...
I was just curious, because it seems like it's...
I do know that with the addition of that, we can mow the airport and the center medians in the same amount of time it took us to mow the airport.
Yeah.
So it's...
A time saver, for sure.
Did we get that snow blower for it?
That would be fire, if they're going to be using it here for building maintenance, if they want to buy those attachments.
Yeah, that would be through the building, and that was approved already, we just haven't, no snow.
Side trail, we have to pay for contract on the plowing here and mowing? Is that still effective, or is that going to be a time where we're going to turn that over to us maintaining it?
I think that's all in the shared use of the parking lot agreement.
Is there a sunset on that agreement, where we could take over our own maintenance, or?
So the contract for the snow removal ends, ended in March. If you were to look at that, you would have to not only add a couple of employees, or at least one employee, and if we did add this park maintenance, that person would come on till probably February, March. So, I mean, this year for sure would have to still be contracted out. I mean, it'd be something you could look at in plumbing season 1920, but, you know, by the time we hired somebody else in, and just the, kind of the lack of equipment, you know, we have everything utilized for our streets and our flower outside. If you fall along with their CIP and end up adding a loader here in the future, then you'd have that extra piece of equipment that would be able to come in here and do that. Otherwise, you'd keep pulling a piece of equipment off of a road, you know, pone residential streets to come into this lot. So as of right now, it's more beneficial to contract that, so. As with Lakeside, it'll, Lakeside will still be in, contracted out this winter, and then it'll get reevaluated, you know, next year, once to see where our staffing level's at and equipment. It's kind of, you know, Frank, it's kind of dependent on what we get approved for budget for employees and for equipment is kind of where we'll set for next year.
Alright.
Last one there, highlighted in blue, that economic dev miscellaneous waivers. You'll see a decrease of that $30,000, that's specifically due to, there's a tax abatement agreement with the manufacturing facility, TMI. That agreement ends in 2018, so we'll no longer have a liability to turn that money back over. Any other additional questions? Expenditures?
Just to touch back based on the park waiting script, I think I'm wrong, Hannah, but $43,000 isn't all the FTE. It's also a transition of some of the part-time seasonal, just to make it more legitimate of matching hours. You know, hours worked, we had a lot of them, pretty much of all of our seasons were staffed on the streets. We're just trying to kind of normalize to match hours for hours. So that 43 isn't all the FTE, it's actually moving some of the seasonal dollars, just transferring from streets over to parks, just to kind of make it more transparent or matching up our hours.
Now, next year, we won't be contracting any street sweeping either?
That'll come up in the Stormwater Fund, you know, that'll be a decision that has to be made too. That's a decision if we want to have an employee do that, or if we want to contract out. And that's, that'll be another decision that has to be made.
Did we purchase a sweeper already?
Sweeper's sitting in the garage, yeah.
Sweeper.
$250,000 sweeper for about $13,000, so that was a pretty deal.
Just maybe one extra clarification, but the Team Vantage abatement, do you know when that drops, huh?
Um, is the Team Vantage a TIF or a tax abatement?
I thought that was an abatement.
I think it's TIF, I'd have to go back to that.
I believe it's a TIF, sorry. I think the only tax, true tax abatement we have, I'd have to just take a look to see the, what they were, but is the TMI, which will fall off. Once that falls off, it'll all just be the TIF agreements. And I'm not sure off the top of my head how far that TIF district goes out.
Okay, that's fine.
Nope, yep.
Yeah, I think it's...
I thought it was an abatement, a TIF.
I'll look it up, I'll see if I can find the documents here.
Sure.
Thank you, Dan. Again, we just have some graphics to go along with these general fund expenditures. You can just see the departments, these are put into, you know, a little bit smaller categories to see general government, public safety, public works, culture and rec, and miscellaneous, and how much those departments take up of that part of the pie of expenditures.
Is there any way we can get the elections evened out every year? I mean, we talked about it before and...
Right.
Because we don't have elections in one year, but did we find out from the county if they would be able to bill us?
We didn't find out from the county, but the one thing, just away with, you know, we have to account for those invoices, even if they did bill us in 2019 for 2020 services, we would have to push that expenditure into 2020, even if we paid it in 2019, just for accounting purposes. So it would still always just show up every other year.
It'd be nice to be able to budget for it yearly rather than having that...
Right.
That swing back and forth every other year.
Yep, it is hard, but it's something that every city sees in their budget every other year.
Sure.
Next, we'll look at the tax levy summary. So kind of everything that we've talked about culminates into, you know, what's our tax levy going to be? What are we going to be taxing citizens in 2019? So you can see the bottom line there, the total. So we're going from about $10 million to 10.2. The biggest increase there is due to the general operations levy. So again, that is affected by how much general levy we need to support those general fund expenditures that we just went through. That's really our only change, reason being, our debt service levy. That one, the 2012 A Bonds actually matured in 2018, so we no longer have to make payments on those in 19. So we actually shifted those levy dollars up into the capital equipment levy. So that went from 330 to 700,000. That was also a plan in 18 that we knew those were falling off, we'd roll them into capital equipment. We'll take a look in a couple of slides at how that 700,000 is going to look to help finance, you know, our pay-as-you-go equipment. With that, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but sometimes it's hard to say, okay, this is our levy, but how is that going to affect our tax rate, how is that going to affect our citizens? So the main things to focus on is the bolded lines. So if we take our local levy divided by our tax capacity, that's how we're getting at our rate. So with what we're proposing right now, we would actually see a rate decrease from about 41.8 to 39.1. The reason being, so when we increase that local levy, you know, the numerator in that equation, our denominator, the tax levy, or the tax capacity, excuse me, to come up with the tax rate is also increasing. So that allows our tax rate to actually decrease slightly with this levy that we're proposing. And with that, I did take a quick... And with that, um, I did take a quick look, so there's a lot of disclaimers here. Um, these are very preliminary numbers, Washington County even, you know, cautions, these are estimates, you know, things are gonna change, this isn't exact. But, um, I think it is looking pretty good, I think they're good estimated numbers. For an average homeowner, it looks like with this scenario, they'd see about a twelve dollar increase in taxes for twenty nineteen. Think it's good too, just to look at the history, you know, of where the city has been, ten years is, is a lot of history. But even if we do go back, you know, about five years, we have been floating in kinda that forty-two to forty-four percent tax rate. Um, so with what's being proposed right now, at that thirty-nine percent, it, it really would be one of the lowest since twenty twelve in there. So with this capital equipment levy, so just to give a little bit of history, um. Again, in twenty eighteen, it used, we actually took it out of being accounted for in the general fund. So that capital equipment, it used to be levied for within that general line item, the reason we broke it out. Um, is to help, you know, pay as you go, as well as track that capital a little bit better. So with having seven hundred thousand dollars dedicated to that fund in twenty nineteen. We can take a look at, at how that affects, um, it's kinda broken up here, it's also the last page of your packet, it's, uh, kinda together. Um, so the top page, you can see, this is just kind of a cash flow. So we're seeing, okay, if we're gonna levy seven hundred thousand dollars a year, there's also, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars of other revenue. With our expenditures that we have in our capital improvement plan over the next five years. How, how are we gonna fare? You know, are we gonna have enough money to afford all of these expenditures? The expenditures, again, um, are highlighted here, the ones in blue are the ones we're kinda focusing on here in twenty nineteen. As this is what's impacting and gonna be spent with those levy dollars. The one thing that, um, I think a big decision point will be this year for council is that. As you can see, if you look at the very bottom line, in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, this fund is projected to run a deficit. Um, so with all the capital equipment, um, that department heads are wanting to purchase. With that seven hundred thousand dollar levy, there's just, you know, not quite enough, I mean, it's not a huge deficit, but about two hundred thousand dollars. For a couple of years there that we're running in the hole. Um, so there, there are a couple decisions, so one is that if we would wanna increase that levy. From seven hundred thousand, even like seven hundred and fifty, um, I think does help that, that deficit quite a bit. Um, as well as, as you can see, there's other financing sources, and that's actually how this fund got established. Through transfers at the end of the year from the general fund. Um, so maybe thinking forward, you know, this December, if we're thinking we're gonna have a surplus again. Maybe, um, earmarking some of those funds to help, to help out this fund, so we, we don't see that big deficit coming in twenty twenty.
Question, when I'm looking at that fund and then, you know, obviously like in all the funds where we have wages, benefits, other things like that. Don't we project an anticipated increase? Each year forward, instead of just keeping that number steady?
We could, yep, so this is, this scenario is just, um, just saying, you know, if you wanted to keep this levy consistent. For the next five years, so that maybe, you know, you could grow in other parts of your levy, but you definitely could increase it, you know, every year. So it's just kind of a, uh, and if you wanna grow in, you know, general operations levy the next couple of years, debt service should stay about the same. Um, so it definitely could. But it looks like if we did keep it at seven hundred thousand for nineteen, we would be, we'd be looking pretty good for nineteen. We just have to do an increase, maybe then in twenty twenty.
And I think too, one thing to look at too, is the fund balance on the bottom line of this sheet too. Where you could actually look at is twenty twenty, that's when the fund goes into deficit, so you're fully funded in nineteen and twenty, but then going into. At the end of nineteen, of twenty current budget productions, you know, we're, we're hitting that deficit amount, but. Projecting a surplus, if that's transferred in, like Hannah mentioned, should absorb that, then we should be, you know. Potentially cash positive all the way through twenty twenty-three, depending upon what that surplus looks like, you know, we don't, a- again, it's early, but again, we're. Tracking that we're gonna have a surplus coming in this year as well.
I would, um, so it'd be lovely to have a surplus and be able to pull that back in December, but for purposes of setting the preliminary levy. I'd like to see us perhaps bump this up for, whether it's fifty thousand dollars or something, to at least build it in. For at least a preliminary levy, get closer to year end, we can see how we're tracking and, I don't know what's available for it. We can always pull it back in December, is my point.
Right, well, I guess, you know, and maybe Dave can speak to this, but, um. Equipment keeps going up every year, probably a lot more than any of us realize, but. Are the numbers reasonable, you know, looking ahead four or five years, or?
All depends on the cost of steel and the cost of, you know, what you're building it with, so I mean. You, you prob- I mean, I can pinpoint down nineteen, just because they'll, they'll pretty much guarantee your prices. Twenty, you're getting a little out there, and then twenty-one is, you're just, you're just estimating your percentage.
Up for grabs.
Well, I'm like getting the grant for the sweeper was a huge help for this one, but.
Yep, and there's, there's tons of, you know, even for Al as well, there's, there's a, getting to be a lot of, uh, clean diesel grants. You know, to take an old vehicle that's using, you know, doesn't have the emission standards on it, and I had, had applied for it last year, didn't get it, but. You know, you need some of these plow trucks too, that we have factoring here pretty much every year for a while out, that you could hit on one of them and, you know. Minnesota will pay for, you know, three quarters of that plow truck too, just for getting something that has the tier four on it, so.
So now, um, are, are replacement cycles within reason now, do you think, on your equipment as well?
Yeah, this is all front loaded, this catch-up, but for the plow trucks, it's a nineteen ninety, a ninety-two, a ninety-three. I think in ninety-seven and then two thousand two, or for the next five, so you're replacing a twenty-nine year old, and another twenty-nine year old, and. We make a jump though, and then we're up to two thousand seven, and then we have a bunch there at thirteen, fourteen, so it's. You know, it's kinda like with Al as well, I think we're kinda front-heavy on this until we can kinda get our cycle going, you know, they adopted the. You know, the equipment replacement policy, I think it was like in thirteen or fourteen, wow. That's great that you adopt that, but we have, we have so many pieces of equipment that were way past. Those, those years and miles, so it, you know, it's kinda, it's gonna be front loaded for these, I mean, but you can kinda see as a. Even for myself too, after twenty-one, it kinda, it tapers back too, you know, so it's, it's kinda getting past this front loading of. You know, not to be the bearer of bad news, but if none of that gets approved in nineteen, it's all gonna be on there on twenty, with everything that's on twenty, you know, so it's just gonna keep. Keep rotating, so I mean, your best bet is to buy when you know what the price is versus gambling and, you know, it's. Never gonna go down, they're not gonna say, oh, wow, it's a great deal, and we're gonna cut plow trucks down to fifty thousand dollars a piece, you know, it's. If we have the cash available and are able to, you know, pay as you go, it's, you're, you're almost better off. Spending your fund balance and getting this stuff now than, uh, you pushing it down.
Is there anything that's scheduled for replacement, you think, that doesn't necessarily need to be replaced?
I mean, there's some of that, the stuff on the wishlist that would be new stuff, like, you know, the, the patching, trailer attachment stuff, but I mean. Honestly, the, the plow trucks and the loader, I mean, that loader, if you're gonna use that as your, your full-time loader, I don't know how much. Long you got on it, you know, it's, it's what, you know, as well as the plow trucks, you know. It's fine when they're running, but when that thing breaks down and doesn't work anymore, it's, now you have a whole plow route that you're not getting, so it's.
Are you planning on keeping any of the, um, replaced ones for backup or anything?
We always keep one, we'll keep one of the best, you know, what we have, just to have as a backup, you know, that'll sit at the shop, that'll be ready, you know, with. The plow equipment on it, so if one of our other ones go down, then, you know, we can hop into it.
And I guess the last question, um, for like mowing the ditches and taking care of tree branches and stuff out in rural areas. Is there a better piece of equipment that we don't have now? You know, something that will do it a lot more efficient, so we can get a lot more miles in there?
You start getting some pretty specialized piece of equipment that are, you know, upwards in dollar amounts, and you have to kinda weigh. Staff time versus equipment that'll, that'll sit there too, you know, so. Our wintertime is when we do most of our tree trimming, and, you know, we have staff available, so it's, you know, you're not. Doing something that you have something else to do, but in the summertime, that piece of equipment, it's that we're not like a rate tree service that can. You know, go year round.
And you just have guys walking around with chainsaws basically trimming trees, right?
No, we use, we have a bucket truck, the boom truck that goes up, and then also loader with the basket in it, that'll, you know, go down the road, and, you know, if you can reach up. In a basket with a pole side, you know, you're clearing the road out pretty clear that way, and then you have a crew behind us chipping, so.
Okay.
Our plow trucks, how many of them get used in the summer?
Um, well, with the comp, we'll say we're using them weekly, and then on top of hauling gravel and doing our, you know, our other projects. You know, a lot of them, I'd say half of them sit.
That's why.
With that roll-off, you know, now that we got the one roll-off, and this, this, the one for nineteen and twenty are priced in with roll-offs. That you'd be able to, you know, one would have that, uh, patching attachment on it, so you'd be patching with that year round with that one, and then. The other one would have roll-off for dumpsters and all that kinda stuff, so.
I'm just curious how you got those nineties trucks to keep going this long?
Those are the ones that sit, you know, so we have, most of our tan- our tandems are oh-seven and up. So those are the ones that run, and then the nineties pretty much, pretty much sit, the one that gets used for the weed harvester that hauls the weeds. You know, that doesn't get too much stress, but the rest of them, the real old ones is sitting in this old shop and wait for, wait for winter, so. You really don't wanna put too many more miles on them in the summer, you just kinda save them, save them for the winter.
And now, you just use one truck for, uh, pre-treating the rods?
As of right now, yes, um, that would be if you got that other roll-off too, then you'd be able to, you'd be able to do two of them. That's with that, um, also under the plumbing control upgrades, that's what that would be to get another brine tank system. That would be an attachment on that new roll-up, then you'd be able to have two vehicles that would be able to bring.
The last thing we have, um, it came out of finance committee, um, so we thought we'd bring some scenarios forward. Um, there has been some talk about, you know, what if we, we started levying some money for gravel roads? So if you remember back, uh, last year in twenty seventeen, part of that surplus transfer, we used two hundred thousand dollars of it. To stash away for the gravel road paving. So that's still there, it's not gonna go anywhere, um, but currently that's, it's the two hundred thousand, that's all we have sitting there. So if we did want to add to the levy, um, and what we were kinda thinking, so this graphic here, this is the levy as we presented a couple slides ago. Um, without anything in there, but the, there's three scenarios, and they just kinda give you an idea of how this graphic would change, depending on. If we added in this levy, it'd probably look, you know, we'd add it in below capital equipment levy. It'd say something, you know, pavement management, gravel road paving levy. So the first scenario we have here is if, if we added a hundred thousand dollars a year for this levy. To specifically be used for gravel road paving, you know, even in the future. So that would increase the levy, um, to about ten point three thousand in twenty nineteen. And be about a three percent then overall increase in the levy. Um, your tax rate compared to twenty eighteen is still lower. If we go back to that, um, dollar amount figure, so without this scenario, it was about twelve dollars. Estimated increase per homeowner, with this scenario, it'd be about twenty-two dollars that a homeowner would be seeing in twenty nineteen. Um, so an extra ten dollars would, would be for this gravel road paving.
Did you say twenty-two dollars?
Yes, yep. With that, we have another scenario, you know, if we put away two hundred and fifty thousand. Kinda shows you how that levy would change again, up to ten point four, still under, uh, below our tax rate than we had in twenty eighteen. That effect would be about, um, thirty-six dollars, so about twenty-four dollars more adding in this scenario.
How much road can we get paid for a quarter mile?
Also depends on what the contrib- we haven't, we have to change the policy on contribution, right, so.
It would still depend on, you know, um, the property owners there paying a portion of that as well. Unless we come across a road that's wetlands or something like that, where we can't really assess somebody a. You know, a hundred thousand dollars for doing their part of the road when it's all non-developable land.
No, this is paving, this is curb gutter paving, whole nine yards, or is this the double?
It would vary, so, you know, typically if we're out in rural area, shape and pave project, you throw a thumb, use a hundred and fifty foot. So, your traditional twenty-four foot road, no curb, maybe a couple culvert replacements. Adding a little bit of gravel, you know, shaping and grading the existing base, and then two lifts about two minutes of basicores and wear course, a hundred and fifty a foot. And if you get in the curb and gutter and full road section, that's where we've, uh, really been around the three hundred to three fifty a foot. Depend what you gotta do for stormwater management, because that would then trigger the rules. Uh, and then depend, you know, totally varies again, utility replacement, like Fifteenth Street, where we did full utility replacement. Now, local road projects now, we're doing some spot repair stuff here, but not fully replacing the water main. The, obviously, the next time you do a street project, you'll have to account for that, because that, some of that stuff's been there since sixties and seventies, but. You know, we monitor where we have leaks and all that, so our brakes and stuff like that, and thus why Fifteenth was. We're adamantly supportive of having to replace the water main at the time of that improvement, too, so. But, you know, a lot of your gravel roads are in the rural area, other than a couple segments, you got Ninth Avenue Southwest, Fifth Street Southwest. I think there may be one more in the Northwest, um, and then some smaller areas when you get around the lakes that have a lot of density. Actually looking right here at the PowerPoint I gave back in seventeen, you know, we went through all the gravel roads and stuff like that, so. And different scenarios where we had density, and where we dent, what that assessment would be based on the current assessment policy, and it ranged anywhere from. Six thousand dollars a lot up to fifty plus, because if you got, you know, a bunch of homes, count it as a unit. Versus big parcels of land, or, or unbuildable land, and how you would have to take that away, and wetlands, stuff like that, so. You know, it varied substantially across the board, and thus why some of the reasons we've been doing the double chip seal. I mean, basically, we're coming in twelve to fourteen bucks a foot with that, so.
Ten percent of the cost.
Right.
But that's depending on availability of the material too, right?
Of course, yeah.
Uh, well, we would like, like to have adequate base there, and that's what we've been using the reclaim or the millions for. So, just like this year's project, we generated some more supply of that, next year's project will generate some more supply and. Get that staged over those really rural gravel roadways, and that's where we've been working the double chip seal.
Nothing coming off the freeway though, at all, unfortunately, huh?
The other issue about that is that, it's quite a cost savings, once that road is done, too, I mean, as far as gravel maintenance and. Grading and all the other things too, some things are considered there too.
Potholes, frost boils, dust.
Yeah.
It all goes away. I mean, you, you saw, you, you guys drive Forest Road.
Yeah.
That's a high-volume road, and we took a chance, tried there, because we were spending so much on just patching it with blacktop mix. We reclaimed it up, shaped it, and did the double chip seal, and, you know, we haven't spent a dime on it since then.
That road has really turned out nice, I thought.
The other roads in the south part of the town where we did it in the low volume, that, that's gonna last a long time, so. And your next, um, process would be to just do a single layer of seal coat on it, another layer. So, it, not anything that needs to be corrected with pipes or anything, but not much out there right now, so.
And definitely the idea with these scenarios is, um, I mean, even with the first one, a hundred thousand dollars, plus your two hundred from last year, I mean. Three hundred thousand dollars isn't, isn't crazy, but we would think, you know, that this levy would then stay in place, you know, maybe for a number of years. Um, so then, depending on how much funds, with the assessment, you know, the assessment policy also needs to be evaluated. But it could be a, a steady stream of revenue if, if council wanted to go that route.
Just to put the numbers, so at a hundred and fifty a foot, you're looking at per mile, right around seven eighty-two. If, at a hundred percent funding, if you did eighty percent city funded, twenty percent resident, you know, assessed value, you're looking at six thirty-three per mile. At seventy percent, five fifty-four, so that just kinda gives you an idea per, per mile of gravel road. At seventy percent, five fifty-four, so that just kinda gives you an idea per, per mile of gravel road at a hundred and fifty a foot. So at that seventy percent mark, about five hundred and fifty-four thousand a mile is what the city's cost would be.
Thanks for doing the math, I was thinking about it, but not that quick.
Oh yeah, for a little over thirty miles of dirt roads yet?
No, we can always allocate a paving fund for double chip seal.
Um, I don't, I mean, that's in our regular maintenance plan, so I don't think we'd want to do a separate fund for it, would we?
Yeah, so our double chip seal, like, so this year instead of doing a seal coat project, we did a double chip seal. So at some point, you have to make that decision, do you wanna do a seal coat project or you wanna do, do a double chip seal, you know? And maybe this gravel road paving thing would be a gravel road improvement fund. So then you could make a decision, hey, do we wanna do, we got a bunch of millions on two miles of road, let's spend the two hundred thousand and double chip seal it. You know, instead of, you know, then that wouldn't be an assessed to the homeowner at all, you know, and you'd get that, that road, dust control and all that stuff, you know, cut down on the maintenance.
That makes sense.
I like the flexibility of that.
How are we doing on franchise fees, is, is, is all the money we're collecting going to roads? So we raise that up to reflect what, what we're actually getting?
Yep, they're actually, those franchise fees are being accounted in the same fund that we're moving the state aid dollars to for street maintenance. Um, so now that fund will really be, you know, this is a street maintenance fund, a lot of our revenue streams as well as our expenditures for those streets will be accounted for in that capital improvement fund.
And Ryan, um, it's been several years since we did a real comprehensive street assessment, but are we keeping up, are we keeping up, are we?
So we've worked with Hannah a lot to combine that, so we're not penalized when we have been under budget every year, so that just keeps revolving in that fund, so instead of starting out with a seven hundred thousand each year and we might spend six fifty in the total project cost, you know, that kinda just went poof away, then we'd start again at seven hundred and so always having a plan on that, now if that's carrying over, that's gonna help us a lot. We're so close to really getting, I think, where we wanted to, because, you know, we've been in this program now and before that we really weren't doing anything and we've, we asked for an additional two hundred thousand to be put into just to try to get something bigger, because we're so spread out right now in spots that are really blown up and need to be addressed. That, you know, a couple of big years and projects, certainly I think we can catch back up where we want, uh, and be into the neighborhoods where we can go back to the mill and overlay again, because, you know, we're having to do the full, a lot of utility stuff and, you know, that's bogging us down, but that's helped with some other stuff. But we've been consistent and that's what's been the important thing. We haven't had the fluctuation, but it'd be nice to, like I said, use the, have the money come back when we've been under budget. But by being consistent with the fee, you know, one of your most consistent fees you've had since two thousand eleven, twelve, we've been able to plan stuff out, you know, where we're going, bids are good, then we can continue to keep going in a project, cause we know we gotta go, you know, so we staged stuff like that and, and picked up a lot of extra lineal feet, uh, part of those projects, this year's is an example of that as well. We got to basically finish all the way back out to the road both ways, so, uh, you know, we, we use what we can, we could use more, but, you know, we've asked for a little more in this, in the budget this year to help jumpstart some other areas that are getting left behind, but, you know, like I said, if I could just be two years ahead of where we're at right now, I, I know we'd be sitting really good. But next year you're gonna have a lot of nice stuff too, the state aid project again, getting away from the grant matches that we've done with a lot of trail work, which has taken our money away from the state aid streets, because we designate, uh, twenty-five percent of our roadways are designated state aid routes and we try to use our state aid funds on those routes, um, while I use the local money, the franchise fees and, you know, the local roadways, so. No, I wanna, I don't wanna jump the levy just, you know, for a project or two, but like I said, consistency has been our best friend and that's what helps us the best, you know, so we don't deviate from year to year and stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Hannah, you said a hundred thousand dollars for the gravel, what, fund was twenty-two dollars a home, what was two hundred, what was twenty, I'm sorry, the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Thirty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then just with our third scenario, um, again, just increasing, um, that, if, you know, we were, were add, uh, were to add five hundred thousand dollars to the levy, um, you'd see about a ten point seven million dollar levy. That rate is still coming in under what we had in twenty eighteen, um, but just due to increased market values, um, the homeowner would then see about sixty dollar increase in nineteen with this scenario. Um, with, compared with the twelve of the original, that's, you know, about a forty-eight dollar, dollar difference with this, with this scenario. Um, but a good thing to, to keep in mind, um, with any of these scenarios is that it doesn't, you know, just have to go to gravel road paving, so, you know, this scenario too, you know, if you wanted to add, um, as Maro was talking about, the fifty thousand, you know, maybe to capital, if you wanted to throw it at general operations, um, as well as then put two hundred thousand dollars towards gravel road, this scenario would still hold true. But other than that, that's really all I got, but if we have, you know, is there any, any concerns, comments, um? We do have opportunity for a budget workshop next week as well, if there's anything additional that you would like us to bring back next week, um, but otherwise approval at September tenth. One thing I know that was brought up too is that, you know, if we have a new administrator starting, um, just remember that this, whatever we set at September tenth for the general fund, um, for the levy, levy overall, I shouldn't just say general fund, um, it can never go higher than that for the final. Um, so whatever we cap it at in September, that will be the highest that we can, we can go for nineteen.
Well, thank you for the presentation, thank you for all the work.
Yeah.
Um, I think before we start our presentation, I'd like to call on all the department heads to weigh in and if you're satisfied with what's in the budget now, if you see anything that you wanna call our attention to.
I think for fire, I think, uh, we've got a pretty good budget and I'm satisfied with what was presented.
All right.
Yeah, with, uh, police, um, I know the mayor and city council, um, came forward a few months ago and stated that they wanted to have a, a flat, you know, levy as close as they possibly could and that's what we tried to present to you, um, as department heads and with, uh, Dan. Um, you know, of course, there, there are always things, um, you know, looking at that case study, I think there, you know, always is, uh, a room for discussion in regards to a couple of the pieces that they put in there, you know, they mentioned the community service officer program and that was presented to you in this, um, budget cycle. Um, there was also a discussion of, um, um, you know, there was not only just a CSO, but it, it, you know, one or two taking on a lot of different, uh, wearing a lot of different hats and that's also why we presented the CSO to you. We're calling, uh, calling it right now a community service officer, but they're wearing a lot of different hats, as you see, admin, you know, code enforcement. There are a lot of different areas that that person can, um, can work and there's enough work there for them. Um, we're just still trying to wrap our arms around exactly, is it gonna be called a community service officer and what, uh, allocations of, uh, different duties and responsibilities is that individual gonna take on? Um, lastly, we also, um, in that case study, they did mention, mention a detective sergeant and at this time I left it out, um, of the budget, um, cause I wanted to make sure that I, uh, you know, we, as I said, we wanted to keep the levy as close to, to, um, zero as we could. Um, but that is something that if the city council wanted to discuss, you know, I'm open to it. But I just wanna let you know, that's the reason why it was left out for the two thousand nineteen, um, budget.
No, thank you. And we have anything?
Yeah, I agree with a lot with Rick said about, you know, we want, you wanted to come back with a flat budget, I think, you know, this is, I'll speak for myself, but this is my operations and my wishlist of the equipment I want, so I mean, this is kind of, there's no other surprises or anything else that, you know, that I myself am looking for and we, the operation, we're running pretty much flat and then, you know, pretty much that increases, uh, the CIP. So, um, strongly feel that we need another employee in, in public works, not only, I mean, taking back the, the mowing, I mean, we're contracted out for somebody to come and mow it for twenty days out of the year, I mean, a full-time employee would, would give us year round, add a, add a plow route, I mean, we've added tons of trails and sidewalks that we have to maintain now as well and, you know, looking forward, you know, to be able to take back Lakeside Park if, if you were to do that, I mean, that's another savings too. I mean, we're probably spending around fifteen thousand a year to get that plot out, so I mean, if you were to take that back in with more employees too, that would, you know, reflect that cost savings as well, so. And we have, we have four, four, our twelve FTEs in public works, but it's kinda deceiving, uh, four of them are in utilities that are full-time. And so really we're maintaining the entire city with eight people, you know, so it's, you know, just with the park amenities, you know, we're, last year I think we, with my, uh, my tracking of hours, you know, we're, we're basically funded for one FTE in parks, which is, you know, two thousand eighty hours and I think last year we're about fifty-six hundred hours just spent in park activities. You know, so it's, you know, that's, that's taking people away from doing streets or people from sewer and water doing parks activities that, you know, they should be doing other stuff that are in parks, so I think it's, you know, the.
Is there a way to get a lower cost position just dedicated to parks? Or even not?
You said you're gonna allocate one of your existing seasonals for parks to assist in the mowing in the summer?
Yeah, so we, we have, we have an ample amount of, of seasonals that would be able to assist in, in that, you know, it'd be a full, you know, FTE and probably only need one seasonal to run, run with.
Do we contract tree services at all right now for inspections or any forestry work?
We do not.
Do we do any of that?
We don't have a, an on-staff arborist or any of that.
Is this, I mean, are those duties you wanna put on that new parks person or what's your thoughts on that?
You'd really slim out your pool if you, if you put that as a requirement.
If you, yeah, if you go for a forester and arborist, but they do have inspectors, so you can at least go around, um, diseased trees, uh, something of that nature, I know the ash boards here and there's still grant money to be had, but you have to have a program in place.
Yeah.
That's, that's a whole another discussion, another discussion, I mean, that's, we call Forest Lake, there's a lot of trees around here, I mean, I mean, really if you had a FTE doing just tree inspections, I would wipe them out. I mean, that's what they would just do.
All right. Well, I guess to open it up for council discussion on all areas of the budget, I mean, what I see is, is reasonable, um, the paving fund and, you know, Ryan has brought it up a couple times and I'd, I'd like to discuss, you know, improving our infrastructure before development comes in, you know, pre-development improvements in some areas to spur that along. Um, but again, the question is how do you pay for that? And, you know, I think five hundred thousand for, um, you know, paving is way too much, but, you know, we may want to either rename that fund something or, I'd just as soon leave the paving fund as its own, so we know that's dedicated and that's gonna take care of the rural areas, but, um, adding infrastructure, pre-development to spur that along, um, great idea, and we haven't done in a long time, but we need to start planning for some of that and we need a funding source for it. The other item that concerns me just a little bit, the CSO, um, I have no hesitation on that, but I think we need a better definition of their job duties. If they're doing administration, I think we're paying a lot of money to have a CSO do something that, you know, another, you know, clerical staff or something like that could be done. I wanna see them out in the community, engaging the community, I don't want them, you know, doing paperwork half their day or, you know, half of, you know, three quarters of their time doing that, I think that would be, um, a loss to the community. And depending on how, or how we can recruit for that, because we're not really in the ideal district to get, like you said, a, a cadet or somebody that's in the academy or whatever, training for police work, but, you know, possibly open that up for somebody who's already retired, but, you know, getting that, that job description and that definition down a lot better before we actually move ahead with it is, I think, a main point I'm gonna make on that, but between now and next year's budget, we have plenty of time to get that done as well. So I guess I'd like to open it up to any other points of concern or discussion in the, in the budget?
I like the idea of bringing, uh, some utility projects out. Keep talking about wanting growth here and there's opportunities and, you know, a lot of that was what's, what infrastructure's there, water, sewer, et cetera, that, um, you know, it's not feasible for a developer to run it two miles just to do the project. So having something started in that direction, I'd like to see, and because we're growing, I think it's something we could have steadily there. You know, not just a one-time kinda thing, it, it's something we should probably account for if we do wanna, um, promote things, talking about that freeway interchange, um, in a business park down there, I mean, that's not gonna be cheap to get it there, but, you know, if you're looking five, ten years down the road, you gotta make a plan to get it out there.
Gotta start somewhere. Um, the area charges, now are we breaking those back out so that we're recovering those to reinvest them or?
That'll all be hashed out when we get the rate studies and we go back in those funds in the, like, October, air share rate time of the year, well, but we, that, that will be discussed at that point, but I think that is the working plan at this point is to segment those funds to help keep development moving forward.
So just kinda recap on that, so you know what we've been talking about the last couple of years is, you have your user rates, let's just talk about sewer, just make it simple, you have your user sewer rates, but when developments come in, they also get charged a SAC and they also get charged, uh, in the developable areas, a sewer area charge. Those fees are intended to go for infrastructure expansion or major, you know, upgrades. Your u, but they're being pushed in with your user rates to pay for the rates to keep the rates low, right?
Yeah.
So when we're not doing these trunk line extensions like we have done in the past, you know, last one, like I've talked about was Hawthorne Heights, that's how the, those projects get funded. Communities all around us, I can give examples, that's how they're extending sewer and water to developable areas or to a project that might be fifteen hundred feet away to get them the services, but in essence, they were still paying for some of those with their area charges of that development, you know what I mean?
Right.
So if we could clearly separate those two and that's how our stuff's written and why we're telling, why we're collecting that stuff, we truly would have the money to extend these sewer and water stuff to other parcels and you look at the breakouts on, just I can give you a handful of last few, last five years worth of project, you, you have a lot of money in there. But we gotta separate it, you can't let that fall into the pot and subsidize.
So, make sure I understand, so we are subsidizing lower rates by spreading those excess charges?
In my opinion, because at some point when you're all built out, you're not gonna get any of these, these fees anymore. You're gonna just be set with your user rate at the end of the day and you'll, you'll see that's, you know, when you get your rate study back in the water.
Right.
So. Because some of the stuff too in there, and then CIP for the water, you're talking about stuff that you built that you never touched. You haven't done a well rehab on any of your wells. You haven't touched plant two since it was built, you haven't touched plant one and three since the remodel or the expansion. You know, there's things in there that you, you could be doing to prolong the life of that, um, even just dealing with stuff with the media, media in the filter systems, but not to rehab a well and you rely on three wells to feed, you know, water for your, the community. So, you know, that's the stuff that Dave is, you know, built in and worked with some of our technical experts too to help solidify that stuff based on current population, anticipated population and, uh, relating it back to gallons used and projected usage. And that's why I get so adamant about irrigation in the summer and what we can do to educate our neighbors, because if we're really having to design and feed a system for three months out of the year, that's a lot of overkill.
How are we doing this summer, are we come to eighty, ninety percent capacity? Have we come to eighty, ninety percent capacity at times or?
Yeah, I think our highest was last week, you know, it was two point eight-five million in a day.
What's our actual capacity? Realistic.
Right around three.
Okay. Say, on ninety-five percent?
We reproduce a day. It depends, I mean, it depends, I mean, you could- Is, I mean, is three our storage capacity or production capacity? Three's our production. Your storage is, you got, you got a million, two million, well, three million in storage. But you're, you know, at one point, you're running your wells twenty-four hours a day just to keep up, keep your clear wells and your towers up, you know, so.
That's kind of disturbing to hear that we haven't really done anything with these plants that, uh, they've been just sitting there. Something has to be done. We can't be kicking that can down the road, that's for sure.
Well, they are in our capital improvement plan, aren't they?
They're gonna be talked about in October. I mean, it's kind of gonna be a, you know, sticker shock and a rude awakening, especially if we wanna go and split, split it out the way it should be. I mean, we've been a lot of years without setting the user rates to keep them low and subsidizing. And if we truly wanna split and go that direction, I mean, it's gonna take a hard hit at what, you know, our user rates are gonna be to try to get us back. And I mean, that might not be a twenty-five percent, but you might need to get twenty-five percent over, you know, a chunk of years.
Well, it definitely supports people not watering as much in the summer.
And, uh, I mean, if we're pushing that high on our summer use, are we getting close to being able to apply for a new well?
In the CIP in two thousand twenty, it has a new water treatment plant that would include a well.
Okay. But I thought the DNR permitting was a couple of years just to-
That's variable, uh, but certainly it's something you would start relatively soon. I mean, with all that, but, you know, the big thing is, in the CIP is well, or water treatment plant one and three, North, North Town. Uh, that's got a budget of almost two point four million for nineteen where you- But you look at the existing rates, I mean, how would you even afford to do that work? You don't wanna go build something new and leave two stragglers, you know, with a lot of maintenance before you go build something new and, you know, so. Plan is to deal with, uh, water treatment plant one and three in nineteen. So, you know, the people doing the water study will have all this info.
Are we looking to institute new rates after the study, January one? Or what's, what's timeline on study coming back to action?
The city did a, a water study in fourteen, finalized in fifteen. And there was, there was a recommendation there to, for significant changes and step increases annually. And it wasn't followed and the stuff kept flowing down. So, even in fourteen, we knew some of the stuff should have been done already. And we're just become, I guess, part of it is we're ob-, we're obviously becoming more vocal about it because we're getting concerned on what happens on a daily basis. And we don't wanna be the next Blaine, but we don't wanna be too, you know, get things rattled too, you know, fast, you know? But it, it's time to do something. You guys are growing and you look at the number of developments and units that have been brought onto the system since any expansion in your system. You guys, I mean, you got a lot of things that are happening here. And, you know, I've never been so busy in my whole career in this community right now with all the stuff that's happening. And I don't foresee it stopping. So, you know, you got three schools that are thriving, uh, you got MINDOT doing some work in the area. You get the county coming in and doing some work in the future. And you're gonna continue to see redevelopments and housing. So, your, your, your demands are only gonna increase.
We keep moving stuff around budget to make it, make more sense, more transparent. So, I don't see why we would do, I mean, subsidize the water fund for what it should be with the levy.
Exactly, yeah.
So, do you think we need to commit to-
What are the-
Standing by what we need to do with the rates?
Help me, um, Dan, help, help me refresh my memory on what we're able to do with general fund levy for an enterprise fund? What is that? What are, there's limitations there. Or Hannah, somebody?
Hannah B. Moore.
Yep, so these levy dollars will never go into the water sewer fund. Um, so all these levy dollars are general fund, debt service, and then that capital replacement. So, those water and sewer funds are fully funded, um, by, you know, those rates as well as access charges, other things, but they're not levy-supported at all.
Some positive news though, year in two thousand twenty-one, your debt reduces with the water. In two thousand twenty-four, the water debt expires. So, those are some big payments. I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but-
And that's something too with the rate study that they'll, they'll look into debt, debt expiring. You know, the CIP that's coming in and that's another big reason why we're pushing, um, the discussion for those budgets just a little farther, just so we have a better, better understanding.
For purpose, so for purposes of setting the general fund levy in September, there really isn't a decision to be made tonight. It's really just prepping for that conversation in October.
Correct.
Cause then tho- those rates will be built into the total levy though in December.
Nope, nope, the rates will, um, the rates will get approved.
I said that, yep.
Yep, but the rates will never affect the levy.
Understood, yep.
Yes.
So, the real question is what we wanna, if we wanna do a gravel road improvement levy? How much?
That conversation comes, keeps coming up all the time about what we need to do about gravel roads. And I think there should be something that, uh- Oh, yeah. Take care of that.
I don't know, ten million dollar budget, a hundred thousand dollars isn't, uh, you know, I-
At least you're a little bit ahead of it and-
No, I think you should do it in keeping it as a gravel road improvement, not necessarily paving. Like Dave said, it's, gives flexibility to-
Of course.
Feel good about the decision.
Well, I, and I think we need to come up with, um, a policy and how that's implemented. Because it, it will be the council's determination where that money gets spent, not just, hey, we want it here, we want it there, you know, we got to be able to prioritize that. And we have to come up with, you know, a reasonable way where we're not paying a hundred percent of it.
Agree.
Yeah. It, so the decision for which roads are we gonna tackle? Are we going by the needs, problem areas? Are we going from, you know, existing pavement out into the rural areas?
In reality, also some, keep in mind, because it's gonna be a resident participation, um, it's gonna depend on where there's demand and willingness on the part of residents to be assessed.
And you still have to come up with some sort of a percentage.
Unless we're gonna do fully funded and I don't think that's necessarily our appetite in that of a shoot, right?
Right, and, um, you know, there's areas, I mean, is it Heath or two thirty fifth, whatever goes up by Liberty Ponds? Or, you know, a lot of residents that are residents of Shisago County are, you know, coming across our dirt roads. You know, so how do you do, you know, how do you, how do you balance that? And there's a couple, three large parcels that are encumbered with wetland. So, that might be, you know, a, a good example of how we, how we would be able to utilize this fund in a fair manner for things like that, so. But, yeah, I, I think a hundred thousand a year, um, you know, unless, unless we've got people lined up waiting and projects lined up, right now, we're putting money in the bank and we're not, we're not spending it. You know, we're not out there looking for a project to spend it on. It's, it's a tool for when those residents come in and say, I need my road done. Here's how we can help.
And I think too, with that, if there's a funding source going into that, if you're gonna allocate a hundred thousand, the next step would be then probably between now and the end of the year to develop that policy. So, as that funds are available in there in nineteen, if somebody does come forward with a project, that, that pre-work has already been done. So, if somebody comes in and says, I want two hundred feet and paved in front of my house or we got this group that wants to come together, what's the, is it seventy-thirty, is it eighty-twenty? Is it up to a certain amount? So, we can kind of hash those details out. So, as the plans come forward or projects come forward, we have the new parameter set up, given that we have a, a funding source now that the city can contribute towards helping getting those roads, those roads paved.
This might be an odd question. I don't know if this is a good question or not, I'm gonna ask it anyway. So, say we set a hundred thousand dollars aside in the paving fund, that is on top of whatever we set aside end of last year, cause we did earmark some dollars. Um, then we reassess the policy, say we've got a, say we save seventy-five percent and we get flooded with requests. We're not oblig-, are we obligated just because we're able to limit based on what funding is available? That'll be part of the policy?
You could say that's part of the policy where all of a sudden you're just not gonna be encumbered. And it's kind of like with the, the downtown business incentive, if they've capped that at, you know, fi-, twenty-five thousand in the first year is gonna be spent on that.
Yeah.
If they get hit with fifty thousand worth of requests-
Yeah.
And then a twenty-five thousand worth of funding, they're all gonna cap it.
I mean, it'd be great if we could get that much request.
Agreed. And I don't, that might be a wild population.
Get it all done at once and, you know, recover it down the line. But the more, more asphalt we can get, uh, you know, the better off we are.
Agreed.
I'd- Hundred, hundred thousand's a good place to start, maybe a hundred fifty. I mean, we're s-, it's minimal, we're still looking at tax rate dropping, there's a little bit of room. I think having some more gravel or even double chip sealed roads is gonna help that development appetite.
Well, I, I'd also like to have it, you know, if we set it a hundred thousand a year, but I'd like to have the plan, you know, that rolling forward till we get to a cap of whatever, a million dollars or whatever, because that's when we're really gonna have the leverage to get some of those roads done that, you know, aren't affordable to do by the residents. So, but, yeah, let's maybe put that on another workshop, uh, coming up so we can discuss how we do it. Uh, I'm okay with a hundred thousand-
I am too.
Or two hundred, I, five hundred to me seems like too much, not in one year anyway.
And two, with, you know, if you think about that two hundred thousand, even, you know, if you have the hundred back in your mind, say you set the preliminary at two hundred thousand, that'll also give you some wiggle room, you know, before the final, you know, in case anything in the general levy needs to go up.
Cause you can back off.
Yep, cause, you know, estimates keep coming in. We just got an email from the county that, you know, assessing services are gonna go up three percent, um, which we didn't reflect in this budget, cause we just found out. So, that could give you some wiggle room to then maybe drop it, drop it back down in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think too, Gary, I think if you set that number up a little bit higher to if another item comes forward, you know, you have some ability to add that in. So, if the new administrator comes in and has a new initiative he wants to launch, that's actually a lot of dollars under that cap, there is some wiggle room in there. I think if you set it at this current rate right now, you know, you're basically capping, you're, you're not allowing any of that investment. And I think if you look at the budget as a whole, just in terms of market capacity going up, you kind of have a unique opportunity to maybe make some of those investments this year without having a significant impact in, in property tax rates because of that market capacity being so significant this year. And the operational budget being, you know, relatively in line with CPI. So, I think there's kind of a unique set of parameters on this one where if there are any investment initiatives that you guys wanna bring forward, it's a good time to, you know, kind of get those on the table.
Thanks, Dan.
A little side note, you know, when you're, I get it's, when you're raising taxes in a better economy, it's a lot easier. Just a forethought and planning, not that maybe we get a downturn in the economy two, three years and we gotta ask for a larger percentage, you know? So, we should try and find, uh, make sure that we're getting what we need, a hundred, or like two hundred thousand dollar mark. You know, I don't wanna go to half million, but even two hundred fifty thousand might, being we're in a good economy, be something we can start off with and back down on, down the road. If the economy drops out, maybe consider backing off that.
Yeah, two hundred fifty's fine, you know, anywhere in that neighborhood, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd wanna go any higher than that for it.
I even think too, I mean, I didn't know, but I even think too that two fifty, if you want, if you wanted to fund capital equipment and try to help bolster that a little bit more too, you know? And if the economy does go back and all of a sudden taxes are shrinking back, you could easily in a future year reduce the amount that you put into the gravel road and reduce other ones without having to make significant operational cuts to the operating budget. Kind of do these little add-on things on the side that allow us to fund projects that are needed in town. But if, you know, we see that significant decline in market rates some year, we'd see a bigger increase in there. Those are some pretty easy areas to kind of go, we'll just reduce our investment in these two other funds while maintaining operational budgets year over year.
Yeah.
So, two hundred thousand and then plus fifty thousand for the capital improvement to help fund that anticipated deficit down the road?
What are you saying, two fifty?
Yeah.
Two hundred plus fifty?
Accumulate, accumulate two fifty and, yeah.
Two fifty in the gravel fund or two hundred in the gravel and then fifty in the capital improvement? Or do you want two hundred fifty in the gravel fund plus the other fifteen? I, I agree that fifty in the capital improvement would-
Yeah, I'd be fine going two hundred and then fifty. I mean, but you have a recommendation?
I think, um, that, the path that you're going down right now is, is looking to be a, a promising one. I think, um, throwing that fifty thousand dollars will definitely help, um, extra in that capital, capital fund. And again, those are projections, you know, hopefully those, those do come out a little better with that fifty thousand. I think you'll be sitting good, good in that fund, um, as well as with that two hundred thousand dollars then for gravel roads. I think that's a good number, you know, if you do, if, if you did need to come down, I think, I think it's still a good number.
Sure. Um, a couple of other questions. Uh, first off, I don't know if you've got any information, but how are we comparing to other cities in our budget this year?
I don't, I don't have any of, of that information, but I can, I can provide it.
It, you know, before we finalize it, I'd like to have-
Definitely.
Some comparisons there.
Yep.
And, um, Ryan, thank you for bringing up the water discussion there. But I guess the other big thing down the road that we need to recognize is Public Works is gonna need a building. And it's closer than farther away, I believe.
Depends how much snow you get on the roof, I guess, right? I mean, is it, we like to pay as the go, but for a building, is that, that's something we'd usually bond for?
I would think we'd have to for sure on something like that. I guess before even, you know, we'd have to identify where that building's gonna be.
It's collection.
Um, personally, I like the site you're at now. I don't know if there's a way it could be utilized, um, and reconstructed, um, without total chaos. I guess that's the only part of the question. But, um, the central location, I think, is really beneficial to your response times to everything else. And, um, I don't know if that, you know, would mean that you'd have a satellite someplace else just to, you know, more of a storage or, or something. But we need to come up with a plan. Um, I really do not like using the compo site for future public works. I think that is a really, uh, nice property for development. And I believe that we have, you know, logical locations, if, if that what's needed. But, uh, again, we need to come up with something. We're not gonna be able to do it tonight, but we need to come up with, you know, where that's gonna be. You know, we need to come up where that's gonna be and, and, you know, a, a plan to how we get that utilized. Personally, I'd like to see, you know, main public works stay where it's at, if that's possible.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of wheels in action there too. I mean, even with the self-building and the, the pole shed that we're using down there too, you know, when that lease expires with the ambulance, if, you know, that land sale happens, you know? I mean, there's a lot of, lot of factors that'll, you know, play in, you know, so I think it's-
How big a building are you looking at there, Dave? What are your needs?
Biggest you want a building.
Yeah. What's the minimum size you can give one? Let's put it that way.
I mean, I'd have to, you know, look into it and I, you know, you'd have to design it in a way too that it'd be expandable. You know, I've been to a lot of cities too that leave an end, leave an end unfinished, you know? So then, and then we land that way so that you can expand your shop. Cause I mean, if you're, you know, Maple Grove's a, or Woodbury is a perfect example. You tour their shop and they have a complete open end that, you know, it's there for, well, obviously they, I looked at that five years ago and they're, they're adding on to it, you know? So, it's, there's a lot of planning there. You build it to what you need, you know, and a little bigger than that, but then make it so that, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, you're not having to build a new building, you're just having a new addition, you know, just for storage.
Having gone through a whole, uh, facility redone onsite, it's extremely disruptive. Where I'm at, we're very fortunate that other communities let us park some of our larger equipment in their storage places. We don't have close proximity and I don't think that any other storage buildings could house any of your larger vehicles.
And the downside is, is most of our yard is filled with equipment too. We don't have any place to store anything. I mean, a lot of our stuff's outside now, you know, we don't, in the winter, we jam all of our snowplows inside. But, you know, if you drive by now, we have, I have fifteen, twenty vehicles just parked outside, so there's just nowhere to put them.
I think the location of that property might be bringing quite a bit of revenue too, if we were to part with it.
There is that potential as well, I just, you know, the-
I don't like sixty-one by any standard, cause you're gonna have a lot of- I don't like sixty-one by any standard, cause you're gonna have a lot of stopping traffic to make a turn in there, it's a hazard on a highway when you get. Moving traffic with the volume of in and out that you have public works vehicles doing.
It's nice being in the city, but it's also not nice being right in the middle of the city too, I mean, it's, to get. Out of town takes you forever, I mean, you're pinned in by stop signs and stoplights, you know, so it's, there's really no easy way to get. You know, out of the city, you know. Compensate if it's not the right spot, but somewhere where you're kinda close to sixty-one and ninety-seven where you can get on and get off and get around the city. Relatively quick is, you know, would be my, is one of the choice.
There's also some undesirable activities that happen as far as noise, dust, and other things that the facility don't necessarily wanna keep in town or near. Too close to a residence.
And residents jumping into your paw trucks in the middle of the night.
No.
A little bit of that too.
All right, well, definitely it's something we need to bring forward for.
Do.
Discussion or. You know.
Is that twenty pro- twenty twenty project, like in your, like, when would you? Is it as soon as possible, is it, uh, where, where are you in timeline on being ready for that?
Last year?
No, I mean, what? Yeah, as soon as possible, I mean, right now, we're working out of three different areas, you know, so. Yeah, like, I would have taken it, I would have taken it, I mean, it's, it's. It's a, it's a definite need, but it's also, uh, you know, we'll work with what we have for the time being too, so I mean, it's. But, you know, but, you know, Blaine came in and toured the shop and when he said about the snow, that's what we kinda joked about that. And that building sold, that you're gonna get a two-foot snowfall one of these times and you're gonna show up and your ten million dollars of snowfall equipment's laying underneath the roof. You know, so that's, you start, you.
By the, you know, like by the water tower, um, on Broadway, is there? Room there to do something, I mean, is that an option?
So many wetlands out there, I don't even know if you'd have a buildable site out there, I mean. By the tower, you got a little bit of area, but you have wetlands on both sides and that stormwater pond and then all the Bixby is all wetland there too, it's.
Is there anything that EDA was working on with the city-owned property that would accommodate something like that?
Well, I'm sure there is, I mean, we got, there's a hundred and twenty acre, um, parcel that we have now. Um, that would probably incorporate some type of new tower and well on it, I think is. Or somewhere down there, it's just logistics of, you know, are we gonna have the entire public works that far south? And. I don't really know if it's a relevant factor, I mean, we don't have members of the public going to public works, but. Just that traveling back and forth, or, you know, are they just leaving there in the morning? To go mowing, to do this, to do that, and coming back at night, I don't know the in and out activity, I just, you know, to me, the, the central location. Is more desirable, but. There's property by the airport that, you know, is closer, a little bit closer to, that might be, uh. Applicable.
I think it's definitely worth looking at, I mean, if, if we're entertaining the thought of the water plant and the tower and that kind of a site, uh, you know, if you can. You know, the, the tower site would be down on by, close to one ninety, if where, you know, you have your elevation, you know. You could have a location where everything was right there, including that, that plant in one spot, I mean, that's definitely worth exploring to have one, one major campus down there too.
Easier site security and all the above.
What was that?
Easier site security.
Correct, yeah.
Well, and having a tower there, I mean, you don't, I mean. I think it would help to draw other things to that area as well, I mean, you don't see a tower out in the middle of nowhere, you are, you're gonna see a tower. Where there's population, so, um. Yeah, definitely something we should. Have for the discussions, it is relevant to future budgets, it's not gonna affect ours tonight, but. Yeah, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road.
Unless we need to. We need to fund a need study.
Uh, that's possible too, I mean, you know, was it two years ago, we just, we did the lift station or three, when did we start the lift station project?
Seventeen.
Seventeen or sixteen? Yeah, I mean, that was about five million plus or. How much more? Four point three, four point three, so.
Total bond?
Yeah, it's not like we've, you know, totally ignored things, I mean, we have addressed the sewer side of it, so now it's the water side of it that. Gonna have to get on.
Yeah, as far as public works, there's a whole need study of how much space they're gonna need, what's approximate expansion, and like you said, you're. Not gonna set yourself up on a fifty-year building now, but. Maybe it starts the conversation and the appetite we're gonna need, need to spend on, on that project.
Do you include a site selection as part of that?
Correct.
Kind of a site cri- site criteria?
Possible sites, I mean, Ryan might know what possible sites, um, size, what you're gonna need near it, I mean, if we're. Throw me running, you know, down by the parkway, the property we have. Um, you have to factor in water out that direction too, and what water, sewer.
We'd wanna make sure we had sewer and water in our shop.
So, I mean, you're gonna have things like that to factor in, it can kill, kill a few birds with one stone, sure, but, uh, I mean. They just pace out the scenarios, it gets the conversation started, um, it kinda shows an earnest effort.
Well, yeah, I, I think that is a good idea, maybe let's have that on for further discussion. Dave, you can maybe give us some. Square footage, you know, what you feel that's gonna be, uh, covering us for the next few years, obviously, you know, having a building that's expandable is. You know. Great vision.
Yeah.
Um, I think we need, you know, also to look at, um. You know, just some cold storage buildings there as well, um, and or, you know, maybe a, a working shop that's. Isolated from the rest of it, so. You know, whatever's happening in there, you know, different, you can put all the different bays you want in a building, but, you know, if you're painting a truck, that, that, those fumes are gonna cover. The whole building and, you know, it'd be nice to have, you know, if you're doing things like that or, you know, other things that, you know, in a separate. Area that's isolated, but, um, now those are all things to talk about as, as, as we move forward, but. Definitely wanna get them in the capital improvement plan and say, here's, you know, when we wanna see this happen.
At the time, the city went through the development of City Hall building, did the architect at the time do some ki-? I know they did some concepts, but was it based on square footage that potentially might be needed, I'd be interested in see what that info you guys got.
I had to go back, I remember vaguely seeing something in there.
It's some.
Yeah, there's some space needs in there.
Concepts, so I wonder if it was related to a particular size based on potential population in there.
That was when, uh, Public Works was identified as the, uh, the number one need, the way that City Hall was built.
I can go back to what we have in the archives too, cause that, these would be a starting point for conversation, help kinda frame out where we are.
Yeah, but there's also been a lot of cities that built shops in the last five, ten years, you know, similar size, you know, around that size that, you know, I can reach out and. And talk to those, those people and kinda get.
Cottage Road.
Cottage Road, Elk River, Mount, I think.
One to wipe your leg, Blaine did an addition.
Yep, Still Water.
Um, it's, Spring Lake Park, I think, is doing a massive.
Yep, so there's, there's, it's, I won't say the trendy thing to do, but I think a lot of them aren't, well, really, I think a lot of these public workshops were. The same vintage and all, they're all starting, uh, to flop over and out to, to new facilities, so it's. It's probably a good time to get some pretty good ideas and, you know, Blaine has offered as well to have me come and check out their shop and I'm sure these other. Directors and superintendents would be more than happy to give tours and give ideas of what they, what works well, what they should have done and, you know. I kinda, just like to your point too with separating shops and all that kinda stuff, so.
One other thing, just noteworthy, um, in Mount View's project in general, the cost for the new shop was about the cost of demolishing and reroute utilities for the old shop. So another thing to look at, the hurdle of, if we did sell this property as is. That they were occupying potential savings on that one. And a flat piece of dirt is more palatable, but.
Yeah, no, I, it's fine, I, I mean, we're, we're still limited by the tower leases over there, which. We can't really do a whole lot with the property until.
Twenty thirty and change.
Oh, no, we can't wait that long.
Well, you can do something, but you gotta pay significant relocation fees for them to, to move the tower.
It might be worth it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've got other lands, so if we had to leave that. You know, vacant and just, you know, remove the buildings or.
You just need one of them to jump on the north tower, you know, and then they'll follow suit, it's just getting, getting one of them to jump off there and, you know, get a.
They're not jumping out there, I've gotten, I've gotten letters stating the fact that they're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
More than one, cause we've asked multiple times.
We, and we can't even raise the lease fees.
It's all, it's all millerian leases.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I guess just in, just to kinda summarize, so what we're kinda takeaway is, is basically the budget that we've kinda laid out here at in the two hundred and fifty thousand. Two hundred thousand of that for the gravel road scenario and then fifty thousand for the capital equipment needs. Um, kind of seeing that we're kind of have gone through the original budget, do we wanna have the workshop next week, or do we want just to kinda take this back and incorporate those changes? And bring it forward for September, or what's council's pleasure on that?
I really don't see any need to go over it again, I mean, I'm okay with having another meeting, but. Kinda meeting it out after the last couple of weeks, so.
I feel like after we've had finance committee crack at it, we talked about it a little bit on Monday night, tonight, I feel good until September.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back then and make those changes to it and then bring that back in September for.
Fine with it too, so.
Sounds good. Motion to adjourn?
Some hopes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.